Ladies and gentlemen, my goal is to get you out no later than 11:30, right? Mr. Phillips says at 11:30 you'll be talking to an empty room. No, I understand. I'm gonna try and get you out pretty close to 10 o'clock if I can. I really have a whole bunch of material that I'd like to present, but I don't know what's going to be most germane for you, what's going to be your hot topics, and I want to make this presentation for you. The material I left on the table is I gave you a little notepad so you can take notes. I want you to take lots and lots of notes. I've left you a constitution. Face down, I left you a handout. I'm gonna follow that handout somewhat close unless we deviate, but if we deviate, you'll still be able... Upside down, yeah, I put it face down, but...
Gotcha. We can flip it over.
Oh, you can flip it over now, yeah, you're allowed to do that.
You're on clock yet.
Jeff has sat with me before, yes, he is getting pretty good at following instructions, so I appreciate his cooperation on that. And in addition to the handout, I have given you a little article that I wrote about 20 years ago on roads, it's underneath there, on roads for municipal officials. And then there's a one-pager, I thought you would appreciate one-pagers, on motions to be made in terms of parliamentary procedure, so that you have all of that material. But I guess the first thing, not the guess, the first thing I want to talk about is the pyramid, Steelcase Pyramid. Has anybody been following that?
That company is really active in doing some security for that, for the whole building.
Well, you know about a couple crucial things that brought that, what is it, Smart Snap? I can't remember, I'm getting old so that I don't remember the exact name. Smart?
Spark?
Spark, Spark is the name of the company. They're gonna take all 2 million feet of the, of that pyramid, and they are going to do additional. I happened to talk to, well, mayor of one of the communities involved over there last night at dinner, and it was an interesting story how that came about, basically through networking. It did not come through EDC or through any governmental effort. It was just kind of a coincidence that they had. But what the important was, importance was that not only did they have the, the coincidence, was the making of the connection. But the important thing was that there were other, New York, upstate New York was competing, and there were other areas that were competing. They were looking for two things that Michigan provided for them. And one was the economic incentive, so that you have a special legislation for data-type companies, computer-type companies, or so on. And among the special incentive is included no sales tax. They're not going to pay 6% on all of that. And so their argument could be made up and down, you know, is that good for Michigan or not good for Michigan, when you think about it. We talked about electricity. You know how much electricity they're going to use over there?
Can't fathom.
I mean, you can't fathom the amount of electricity. Somebody's gonna get rich off of that electric bill or so on. And I do hope they have a smart meter on...
I think they're gonna need several smarts.
On that little thing that's gonna be turning around, doing that. So that the economic, maybe incentive, was, was one of the things. And the other thing, the most important, or at least from my viewpoint, was that they had reasonably good government in the local areas. You have, what, Gaines Township there? You have tail end of Kentwood down there, and those are... They are not governments, I'm not gonna tell... You are recording this, are you? Okay, then I will be careful. There, ladies and gentlemen, I do, or gentlemen and gentlemen, I do some work on what I might consider the other side of the state. I've written a charter recently for the city of Pontiac, and I think I'm gonna write a charter for the city of Flint, so I get over to that side of the state. You notice, land is much cheaper over there. Lots of empty land in Flint and Pontiac and so on. But they chose to come here because of economic incentives. They would've been over there, right? Same statewide incentive. We had good government over here. Okay? And if there's no other reason that you're here this evening to chat with me a little bit, it's our desire to provide good government, not only for the big companies like that, but for our citizens, for everybody in the community, so we can be a prosperous, healthy community to live, work, you know, all of that other stuff. Okay, so strategies for better government and all. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna move around a little bit, I'm too nervous, and whatever, I had too many cups of coffee today. You wanna know a little bit about me, let me give you, because you need my credentials, you just don't wanna listen to anybody. You have my contact information up there, because there will be some questions, and you will be calling me in the future, and that's fine, too. I started my career at University of Detroit Law School, if that makes a difference, and walking down Jeff's Avenue, minding my own business. The mayor of Detroit says, "Son, you need a job." So I went to work for the city of Detroit, I defended their police department in police brutality cases. You got any old guys here? You may remember John Nichols and Smart, or, no, Stress was the thing, you know, with the decoys and all, and I had a lot of those police death cases and so on, false arrest cases. I was deputy city attorney in Pontiac for about six years, doing somewhat the same thing, being legal advisor to the police department there. But I spent 20 years in the city of Troy as the city attorney, and I had responsibility of everything from animals to zoning. Eight is he? No, Joe, never mind. Anyway, we had the whole thing. I didn't do it all by myself. I had a group of people that worked for me, I had a handful of lawyers that worked for me, some paralegals and so on and so forth. And that was good. The most important thing, I think, that we did, well, there's several important things, but the thing that, I think that we were responsible in helping the community again was a business venture. If you know the Somerset Mall, biggest, million and a half square feet of prime retail space. And of course, the developer wanted to put 10 pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag, you know, like they do, they overdevelop, overdevelop. So for 20 years, we had a lawsuit going, various lawsuits going with the developer. And finally, we did get a good, but that was because the city worked hard with the developer. And we were, we were fair, reasonable, how can I say, smart. We didn't get pushed over. But that was my sort of, oh, what can I say, jewel in the crown or something like that to get that development going. And I would ask you folks that, if you know where Somerset is, would you please shop there a little bit over the holiday season, over the crispy season? Because I get this small little pension from the city of Detroit, or city of Troy, and I'd like that to continue, I don't want that to disappear. So please, do your shopping. They have a Tiffany store, your wife?
I've been there.
You've been there?
I like the valet parking.
Yeah, that's, free valet parking.
It was five, but...
Five, okay, was that tip or actually?
I think it was actually.
Yeah, okay. And then after Troy, I went sort of solo, kinda solo, I moved up to Harbor Springs Resort Township. Population of 2,000, a little less than 2,000. So I went from Detroit, there was over a million at the time, to a little burg of 2,000. So I had the whole smear of things. And now I still do things, I mentioned I did the charter for Pontiac, I'll probably do the charter for Flint. I'm doing some work for the city of Ypsilanti. Empire Michigan, did a little bit of work up there. So anyway, I still do that. I also have a mediator for the circuit courts here, and I do government things. The most interesting mediation, well, I did this one, I mediated a budget for a community. Some council people couldn't get together to pass a budget. And it took four nights with me, their finance director, and so on, to get a budget. And we did refinance some money, we sold some city property, again, one of the cities that are teetering in terms of emergency manager and so on. And we literally mediated a budget, because council people couldn't get their... You're still recording, aren't you? Okay, I'm gonna get their stuff together, you know, so that they could pass a budget. As a matter of fact, it's very interesting, the thing on the Steelcase building, somebody almost held up the state approval in Lansing because the representative wanted to add a rider on that bill to defund Planned Parenthood. Now, as much as, you know, I don't know what your politics are, whether you're anti-Planned Parenthood or you're for Planned Parenthood or so on, but the guy had the audacity to let this multi-bazillion-dollar deal go down the tubes because of his ideology or his political beliefs or so on. That's the thing we have to be careful of in terms of we as decision-makers, as policymakers for the community. Okay, mediator educator, I teach at, I taught at Oakland University, Grand Valley, Ferris, just about anywhere, usually in the graduate courses of public administration. Now, I know Jim, and tell me a little bit, though, about your experience in municipal government, and what is your vision? Three questions. Vision for the, for the city in 25 years? Experience, and what do you want to learn tonight, or what do you want me to talk about tonight? Three questions.
Well, experience, I grew up in Lansing, my dad worked for the state of Michigan. He taught me not just about government, but also, there's nothing finer you can do in a community service, be it on volunteer nonprofit boards or be it actually working with the, with the community. So I kinda fell into the city council thing following the YMCA job and so forth. Was on for nine years. I know it's hard to believe, but I was defeated in the election of '97 to my good friend Mike Blau, who went on to be mayor. Mike and I co-coached some T-Wall teams, as Alan and I did, and, but anyway. And then, 2004, I came back on, been back on. Then Ginny Shores asked me to be her mayor pro temp. And then she had the audacity to come down with cancers seven months later. So I became mayor through, through the back door. But anyway, had quite a bit of experience locally.
Any formal education, master's degree in public administration?
Yes, I do, but with a nonprofit proficiency.
Oh, okay.
But many of my friends, and I almost went for the double master in city management, municipal management, but yes, public administration.
So Jim, what do you see in the city of Lowell, like, in 25 years? And what do you want to get out of this session?
I think it's still a terrific place to live. All, between here and there, it will always be a good place to raise families. It will have balance between light industrial, not anything too big, but on the other hand, great residential area, nice shops, a quaint community that is lovely to draw people from Grand Rapids, so we spend their money instead of our own.
You wouldn't mind a little bit of the computer business coming over here into town?
A little bit.
Just a little bit?
Yeah.
What do you want to learn, or what do you want me to talk about tonight?
I think procedures and, again, how we conduct meetings. Again, maybe you can critique how we did tonight, I would guess maybe you might. It's fresh in all of our memories, and it's something that we all have in common, and how we go through procedures.
Help me out, Jim, I want to talk about your rules specifically. I had mentioned about doing your homework and read the rules. I have, I read the rules, I have some observations I'd like to share with you before I leave tonight. Not make you do it, but just give us some consideration.
And with that, if I might add, we'll have an opportunity if anyone wants to tweak those rules or, next meeting, January 4. But it's important to establish what our rules are and then adhere to them.
Do, anybody mind if we go by first names? You can call me AU, because you forget, you know, that's...
That's right there.
Oh, okay. Mike?
Mike, I have 34 days' experience in municipal government.
Gotcha.
I would like to see a city with smooth roads, bringing all the people in to shop downtown.
Roads and central business district. Okay, good.
Hi there.
Wait on me!
Six years of the council.
Six years, that's been that long?
Yeah. Offered to, and back. And basically, 25 years? I'd like to, I'd like to have all, everything in order. Streetwise, infrastructure, and keep the taxes down.
So can I kind of twist the words a little bit?
Yeah.
You want the government to be efficient and effective, and minimize the taxes. I don't know if anybody can argue that one. Mr. Phillips? I'm not gonna do that. Jeff? You got Jeff, Jeff one, Jeff two?
Well, let's see, municipal government, I do work out the airport.
Okay.
So I don't know if that would be classified or not, but from my related experience, I've been there for 18, 19 years.
It's a municipal airport, it's not a for-profit, there's so much, so you have the same rules that we have here in the city.
Yes, that's kind of like, you know, drawing me into this together experience. The city of Lowell, I'd just like to see it continue to be the great place that I've lived for 48 years. That small hometown feeling, where people know each other. Not too big, we, obviously, you want to keep advancing. I think we've got so many great restaurants and opportunities to see down here with all the waterways and stuff, advance a little bit more.
So you're, not only do you want a nice place to live, but you're talking about the central business district that might have restaurants and recreational-type entertainment and so on. What do you want to learn tonight?
He's taking everything I knew.
Good, good, I love that 34 days. I love it, I love it. No, it's great, because I, that's what I started with. I said, "Okay, clean sheet, what do they really need to know from the beginning?"
Back around 2000, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission for three years, chaired it one year. So that's my experience, other than the new 34 days.
Okay, super. And what do you want to see here in Lowell?
I guess you may have gathered, I want communication.
I heard that.
Yeah, I want communication, and I want the citizens to be listened to. I would like to have more businesses here, to have people have local jobs.
The communication, we're gonna talk about transparency a little bit, and that's, that's one of the things. There's a proactive transparency and there's sort of reactive transparency. We can talk about that a little bit. Okay, I think we, to save a little context, what we're gonna get out of this session, I heard a little bit what we want to do, I know the direction, we want to go 25 years from now, but I'm gonna go on a clean slate, and if we run out of time a little bit, I might come back, maybe. Okay, next, next item, basic thing. Everybody knows about the rule of law, right? Go back to the Mount Nakata, I'm not gonna take you all the way back there, but I just want you to know that we started, we start with the rule of law. It's the most basic thing, is that we have laws that are legitimately adopted. And then, I mean, not a dictator or anything like that, you know, we have our process for adopting laws, even here at the city. And then, everybody has to follow the law. Everybody has to follow procedure. And what we find out now, we have the Cindy and Todd, who may be thinking they're above the law. Or Kwame Kilpatrick, anybody remember him from a couple of years ago, who thinks they are above the law? And that's the one thing we have to remember, that we are all subject to... We have to put the nickel in the parking meter, and we can't park in the handicap zone, even if it says "mayor" on the license plate of your car. Nobody is above the law, and that's sort of the basic thing that we all have to remember. Let me give you a real quick rundown on what our applicable laws are, and I'm gonna give you more information today than you're gonna be able to digest. And this is sort of just a placeholder in terms of what you need to know, and you can learn on your own, or you come, like I say, or you can, other people come in and talk about it. You know the Constitution of the United States. Did I give you a Constitution of the United States? I started out with that. Did I get the year right? I guess, would somebody look and see when it was adopted, was it 1783?
I'll make it Google it.
No, these guys have copy out, is it 1783?
Of course it is, yeah.
Well, of course it is, I just, okay. So we have that, and any, you may want, that's the number-one document we have to deal with, right? Everything's gotta be constitutional, we know that. Under the Constitution is what's known as U.S. Code. Those are the statutes that we have, the public acts of the Congress, that's what they pass on, and so on, you know, the gun regulation, that would be under U.S. Code. And then we have the Code of Federal Regulations, CFRs is defined. Code of Federal Regulations are those things, we talked about the OSHA standards, we talked about the EPA standards, we talked... Jim, you still filing income tax, or are you beyond that? Yeah. One more time. Because you take a look at the, the tax, the law that deals with tax is about this many pages. And then the code, the tax code, the Code of Regulations is, you know, pages and pages and pages. So if you just read the law, you're not going to do it. What's an example of what's in the Code of Federal Regulations in terms of income tax? You get reimbursed for mileage, right? They allow you to take 55 cents a mile for business expenses or so on, on your Schedule C or in your whatever tax return that you do. I think it's 55 cents, it's gonna go down now that gasoline is, you know... With all those adjustments, does Congress make those adjustments? Congress couldn't get it together to make those adjustments, so they give it to Treasury, and they adopt those provisions in the CFR, and they publish that. And that really is law unless Congress voids it. Congress has a chance to appear, or they can rescind it, overrule it, they can do all those kind of things with that. The next thing we have, of course, is the Michigan Constitution, 1963. Some of us were not even born in 1963.
There's some of us.
Oh, okay. I always like to ask for extra credit, who chaired the 1963 Michigan Constitu... ConCon? Jim?
Constitutional Convention?
Yes.
George A. Robinson.
You want to show off, Mark?
No.
Okay, who was the, the co-chair or the deputy chair, the second-in-command?
The decatur.
Decatur. He listened to my lecture last time. My favorite question I had, I asked, so who was paying attention? Okay, so then, under Michigan, we have the Michigan Compiled Laws. Those are, in MCL, you see references with Michigan, for example, the Open Meetings Act is something like 16.263, 265, somewhere in that MCL. Or it's Public Act of 1976, and the number, I don't know whatever number it is, but, so you may have those references. Likewise, the Michigan Administrative Code is like the Federal Code of Regulations. They pass laws, and then the various departments have to develop some rules and procedures for that. Big on that is, we talked about the building codes, the property maintenance codes and all of those things today, that Bureau of Licensing and whatever else it is. There are about eight initials, now they've combined lots of departments. They publish a lot of that stuff. Alex?
Alan.
Alan? Getting old. Okay, whatever you want. In terms of liquor control, you know, we have a Liquor Control Act that says thou shalt not sell to minors, and you have Class C's, and for every 18, 1500 people in the community, you can issue a Class C license and the local government approval. Police have an opportunity to do investigation on the licensee and so on and so forth. But provisionals, they have one-day license, they have all sorts of licenses, SDD's, SDMs, and so on. But the important thing, or not the important thing, the distinction, or the example I want to say, this administrative code includes things like the temperature of the water that you use in the bar to wash the glasses. The legislature can't pass that kind of stuff. The foot candles of light as minimum on a table in the bar. You can't have it totally dark, you have to have at least one foot candle of light in the bar. That's the minimum requirement that you have to have. Likewise, we have the Constitution of Lowell. And the Constitution of Lowell, that I am sure in the 34 days, you haven't read it yet, but I would admonish you, I would beg you, I would plead with you, take time, it's not that much. You know, it's, read that, because that is your constitution. Everything that you do has to comply with your, with your city charter. And then, under the city, that's your constitution. Then Lowell's laws, like the federal code, the U.S. Code, or the Michigan Compiled Laws annotated, you do deal with ordinances. That's the laws at the local level. And then, of course, you have some administrative rules. For example, the meeting rules that we're going to talk about, adopted by resolution or maybe adopted by ordinance, but they are, they are not of the nature of quite the same thing as the law. So that's what we, and then...
Peter, on that slide, is that, does the U.S. Constitution take precedence over the Lowell Charter?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's a good question, and I paid him a quarter to ask that question because I'm going to show you the funnel...
Just wanted to make sure.
The funnel of laws, okay? And if you look at the bottom of the funnel, we can say that that is the action of the Lowell City Council at the very, very bottom, okay? And then you have to work the funnel upwards if you want. So your actions have to comply with, let's say, your rules of procedure, right? Your council rules of order. You can't just say, "Well, I'm not gonna talk about that agenda item today because I don't feel like it," or "I'm not gonna vote," or "I'm gonna vote twice," or "I'm gonna," you know, whatever it is, you're gonna have to comply with those. Then the next thing we have are the ordinances. Are there any ordinances that are applicable to the action of the charter, or of the commission, of the council? Then we go up one level further. Do we comply with the charter of the city of Lowell? Then do we comply with the state laws? Do we comply with the state constitution? And we work our way up to the granddaddy of them all, do we comply with the United States Constitution? So if you adopt an ordinance, for example, or you take an action here at city council, and somebody back there doesn't like it, they're going to say, "Hey, you violated the law somewhere, and you can have, you know, your action rescinded or overruled," or whatever federal court or the state court is going to do. So that is kind of the setup that we have in terms of the rules or of the laws. The rule of law and the published laws that we have. Put up this slide so that we have an understanding of what we're supposed to do in terms of kind of a mindset. What are the things you've gotta do as a city council? Anything you have to do? Okay, hold the charter, that's good, good.
We need to have our meetings.
Okay, yes, there it goes, simple, simple as that. Your, your law, the city charter says thou shalt have a meeting first Monday or second Monday of every month, or so, you have a schedule, so on.
I have the charter on my phone, so I read it when I have free time.
Bathroom time, or, you know, whatever it is, okay.
I knew that.
But the point I'm making is, there's something you must do, okay? If you take a look at state law, Open Meetings Act or Freedom of Information Act, it tells you certain things you must do. For example, you must allow Igor and his, or anybody else... For example, you must allow Igor and his, or anybody else with his recorder or tape machines, all meetings are open or you must allow recording of this, of that. You must have public input, public discussion, or not discussion, public comment, I like to say. The statute itself says, give an opportunity for the public to address the council. Doesn't mean to debate them, doesn't mean to mock them, beat them up or anything like that. It's to address council. All right, let me move over here and kind of change my thinking here. Just a half a second, then I'll move back over there. Got to give them a heads up here, you know, where to move this camera. Whenever we are in any one of these categories, check yourself to say, where is it written? Write that down, please. Where is it written? Anywhere, somewhere. So that when some, one of your colleagues or the manager or citizen says, you can't do this or you've got to do this, either what are the things we must do and what are the things we can't do? When they tell you, you've got to do this or you can't do this, then you have to ask yourself, where is it written? Or you ask the citizen, or you ask your attorney, or you ask the manager, somebody, where is it written? Because you have to have that, that authority. Okay, and then what's left over are those discretionary things that you do where you use your judgment, okay? So what do you got to do? What are you prohibited from doing? And where do you have discretion to operate? All right, let's take a look at what have you got to do by city charter. It's good to reread this every once in a while. We kind of have a tendency of forgetting what we have to do. And it says, council shall determine all matters of policy. Everybody knows what policy is. That's the general direction. We talked about the policy here when, when I asked you, what are we going to do 25 years from now? How are we going to get to there? We're going to do some policy. We're going to be focusing on some downtown development. We're going to take a look at our zoning and so on so that we have an appropriate zoning and so on for restaurants. We're going to have appropriate zoning for residential and those kind of things. So that's, that's the policy that we, we do. And then you're going to do ordinances, of course, and rules and regulations. And while I'm there, I don't know, circle it, or circle those ordinance and rules and regulations and add the words resolution in the margin somewhere. Because a public body only acts through ordinances, your rules and regulations, and, and those are really adopted by resolutions, okay? No matter what you say from the dais here to the citizens or to the manager, to the staff, the, the question is, I like to say, what's mattered? Can't you count to three? Because to pass a resolution or to pass an ordinance, you have to have three people. And that's part of the dynamics, about group dynamics, to be able to get three people to get your agenda item through. That takes us back to the rule of law. Just because you're the meanest, toughest, bloudest SOB on the block doesn't mean you get your way. It means that you have to have three people or two more people to support your proposition. Now that works. Okay. Council shall subject limitations to law, raise revenue, local taxes, right? Appropriations for the operation of cities, spend money, provide for the public peace, health, safety of persons, property, and investigate municipal affairs. If there's something wrong, you have an opportunity to investigate. You have literally subpoena power in your charter. But do you have subpoena power, Jim? No. The council has subpoena power, right? So if you're going to issue, if you ever get to that situation, and I've only been in 45 years of municipal practice, I've only had maybe three or four or five cases where we've issued subpoenas. And I think four out of the five were down in Detroit where some department had didn't cooperate with the city council and I had to go to court to get them. But I had to have the support, the majority of the city council to issue the subpoena on that. So that's what, that's what you have to do. I mean, that, what, what else is there for you to do? Phil Potles?
Yeah.
Paying park benches?
Hire a city manager.
Hire a city manager, that's specifically, where, where is that written, Jim?
I think it's chapter four.
Okay, somewhere. It's written in the charter and it tells you what the, the conditions are. And you make some appointments, too.
Yes.
Okay, but those are the things that we want to take a look at. What are your duties? Basically, what I wanted to point out here is that you're a policymaker. You're not an administrator, you're not a manager, you're not a, you know, put shingles on the roof type of a person. You're, you're kind of the overseer. You're the board of directors as such of the city. So now, what is the mayor's job? What was his job?
He rides in the wave.
Waves, has the regal wave or something like that or so on, is, is marshal. Okay. Number one job is he presides over the meetings. And you know, Jim had it down pretty good.
She was good.
You know, he could kind of help you out. We need a resolution to adopt the, you know, budget that was presented.
He helped her read the words in the evening tonight.
You know, that's...
Thank you, Jim.
So it, it takes time. You know, you're, 34, 34 days ain't going to do it for you. It's going to take some, some time. And parliamentary procedure... It's, it's a blimp shortcut. I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but just while we're talking about it. It's online, it's free, and what you can do is you can do a global search. So if you have a point of order or appeal of the chair or a point of personal preference, you can take a look at, you can Google it, Google Roberts' order. And the thing you have to remember about Roberts, though, is that you want to have the current edition, the latest edition, okay? Don't use the 1924 edition because they're available at Barnes and Nobles for only 49 cents. Why do you think they're only 49 cents? Because they're outdated and so on. Okay, so he presides over the meetings. So the, as mayor, and if you're going to preside over the meetings, you better be sharp on the, the rules that you have yourself. And then you better have a fairly decent command. That's why I gave you the little cheat sheet, the one, the one-pager. And that will cover probably 95% of the questions that you will have on that. And we'll get back to that. So we'll talk about the, so he presides over the meetings, he kisses the babies, I'm sorry, and for all ceremonial purposes, that's parade and, you know, those kind of things. He's sort of the, the face of the city as, as, oh, yeah, yeah, the face of the city.
It's the best one I got.
Well, that's all right. We, we'll do, we'll work on it. Okay. A conservative with peace, there are certain state laws that deal with that. An emergency suppress disorder, I can see Jim did suppressing disorder in the city. Please vacate the streets or so on. There's, if a civil disturbance does create, there's, he's the chief civil authority here in the city. Hopefully, you'll never have to use that.
But when we had the flood, I had to declare a state of emergency that then was able to have other agencies.
Agencies come in, FEMA and so on. There was those prerequisites. Once in eight years? Okay, hopefully, you never have to do that again.
Or anyone.
As such. Okay, so what else does the ma- mayor have to do? The job of the mayor is he has to, a signature on the documents. Do you have a fountain pen?
This is pretty neat.
Hey, 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 hey. Somebody's got to give him a fountain pen with permanent ink on, on, okay. So that are required and, you know, there are contracts and contracts. I'm sure that at every meeting, or you come in every Monday, and Mark has got a folder of documents that you have to sign on, or maybe contracts that the council has approved. Not every council member signs it, but the mayor is authorized to sign that with authentication of the clerk. So it's, she attests to the, to the signature, not necessarily to the content, but she says, yes, that signature is the mayor's signature. That's her dues. Okay. And then we give him, we burden him with kissing the babies, the ceremonial thing, sign all the documents, and then he shall have an equal voice and vote like other members of the council. But he does not have the veto power that some of the mayor in Pontiac has a veto power. Mayor of Detroit has a veto power. Whoever wrote the charter here decided that the mayor should not have a veto power with the council when they act. That's, that's their act. Okay. Duties and responsibility of the man, so we know the council, we know the mayor. Now let's take a look at the manager. What is he supposed to do? Chief Administrative Officer of City Government. Manager, Administrative Officer. Any question about what that language means? He's not a policymaker. You're the policymakers. Administration carries out the policy, okay? And to make policy to say that you should use a number 10 nail instead of a number eight or eight penny nail, that's not managing, right? That's administering. So there's, here, you are not administrators. Okay. He's the administrator and it says, shall be vested with all administrative powers of the city not inconsistent with the provision of this charter. So unless there's something in the charter that says he can't do this, he's got all the administrative powers. So if you say, Mark, you can't do that, you better, or I would suggest you find some, where is it written? Or you say, Mark, you've got to do that. Again, it goes back to that slide. Where is it written that you have to do that? Okay. Shall not administer the electric utility, which shall be administered as provided by chapter 16. Perform the duties of his office under your authority and accountable to the council. So he has to pay, he, you know, he is responsible, you are the boss. He's the chief executive officer. You are the board of directors. And he has to do with what, what you, to council is in chapter five, section four, 5.4. Mayor is 5.2. And then the manager is 7.2. And then it goes on in 7.2. There's a list of about 15 specific things that he has to do that, in terms of budget and managing people and all of those other things. Okay. And he does that not by himself, but he has the department heads. The department heads report, not to the city council, right? They deport to the manager, okay? The manager gives this department head's direction. Okay, they don't go off on their own. He gives them direction. It's not the city council who gives them. You work through the manager. If you have a problem with the department head or so on, part of your obligation is you inquire of the manager, get, get him to report to you or so on. But you can't fire the police chief. You can fire the manager, right? But you can't fire the police chief. Okay, so you have the department heads that you work with. All right, so decision-making that you have to do, the stuff you were doing today up here. And you guys will do there. And do you, are you on a committee or are you just here for the free coffee?
I didn't get coffee. No, I'm on some boards.
Oh, okay.
Same, one, I have a commission.
Okay, so you guys, you know, the same dynamics and the same stuff I'm telling you, instead of changing council, put in commissioner or authority member or whatever, whatever it is. It's applicable to you guys also. This is kind of universal stuff. So dynamics, council dynamics. Got to have with the public, right? And I just think about this a little bit. Is the public, what do you want to do? You want to keep them friendly, right? You want to, you know, you want to be reelected? You don't want to take, take them off? You want to educate the public, okay? And when you debate here, that's part of the, the educational process because you have that conduit going out there, not only to the people here, but, so think about what the dynamics you have with the public. The dynamics you have with the press. You remember the press? They, they have, if it bleeds, it leads. So all they want is bad news and the better, the better, okay? But you can take an affirmative step there and whenever you do have good news, you share it with them. This is sort of the affirmative transparency that, that I was talking about to, to you before. Don't wait for the media to come to you, tell them, hey, we just, we just promoted a new building inspector or we just got this grant or the fire department got the BNE tools. I'm sorry, the, the forced entry, the forced entry tools through the look, grant or so on. You, you, you share that. By the way, you got to edit that tape, you know, don't, don't, don't do a draw. Okay, then, of course, you have to do with the staff. And I will tell you that in the, somebody asked me today, how many of these presentations have I made? And I, I haven't counted them, but there are hundreds of them to various, various municipalities. And I did it for municipal league for their newly elected officials until that got a little over, overwhelming. I was doing it, you know, 10 times a year to, you know. Anyway, the thing that we forget on this is the relationship to the staff, and I want to emphasize that, is that you guys at council, you've got to be morale builders. And there should be a E on the end of morale. I expected you...
My spell check wasn't working.
No, it is. That's moral. You know, that's, that's being ethical and so on. Spell check did work, but that's, again, a lesson to be learned. It got the wrong word that it spell checked for me. Anyway, you're a morale builder. You've got to go out there and encourage the people. Now, you can make the manager the bad guy. He's the one who criticizes. He's the one who disciplines. He's the one who supervises. You're out there to, to, you know, cheer on the team, get them to, to like working for the city. And that's a very, very important thing that we have, especially in these places like, question?
Well, education, the education of the...
Education.
...of working hand in hand, pretty much, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. In, in terms of morale builder, talk to, this is a management function, not a city council function. It, it is in a city council function in one way because you're going to evaluate the manager. And that same evaluation process has to be with the, with the folks that work for the city. And the first thing, of course, is to educate them, to tell them what their job is. A clear job description. Hold them accountable to that job description. If they're not performing, you go to column B. If you're performing well, you go to column A and accordingly. Do you go retraining or whatever? And you have to have those periodic reviews and things like that. And indeed, education is, is an important part. And, and, oh, what can I say? Sort of, I, I call it the rah rah business of, of, whether it's team building, loyalty, enthusiasm. You know, sometimes they don't recognize how good these folks have it. On the other hand, you know, when it comes time to give out some money, you can't be cheap because good help is hard to find. And I will tell you, with the company coming in, the blessing in disguise, they're going to be looking for about 500, maybe a thousand IT workers. So your IT person working at your company, at your school, at your, whatever place of employment is going to be looking over there. And likewise, there is competition for government officials, financial people, city managers and so on. If you have a good person, hold on to them. If you don't have a good person, you know, then it goes... If you don't have a good person, you know, then it goes to column B, right? Either retraining, retreading, or removal, or one of those, one of those types of things. Okay, so morale building, and again, I've mentioned not supervisor or manager, then I have to talk about the dynamics with the manager. I guess the dynamics with the manager is that you have to give him his respect, and you have to treat him with civility. Goes back to morale building, and it goes back to what I said about before, the image of the city. If you're out here, you know, chastising the manager for not polishing his shoes or something like that, how does that look to the public? How does that look to the big CEOs of the world? So take a look at that. Your dealings with the manager, and then, of course, your dealings with each other. You know, I thought today we were pretty good, you know, nobody called, no bombs were dropped. So, you know, I thought that was the only, well, I've seen, I've watched a bunch of tapes of the city council here, and I watched the one of the last meeting, what was it, December 7th, 9th, 7th, something like that. And that was not a bad meeting, there's a little glitch in waiving of the rules at the beginning in terms of adding on the deal with the reports from various things, but by and large, it was not a bad meeting, that will be, had seemed to been ironed out with today's meeting. So again, very, very important. I, City of Warren, anybody know City of Warren? We were throwing ice cream cones at each other. Toronto, City of Toronto, Mayor Ford went and punched out some councilwoman, you saw that on videotape, you know, all over the place. So you see that type of behavior, and as a matter of fact, if you want to have some fun, I looked, when I looked at the YouTube on your city council meetings, I mean, they're funny too, you know, I don't want to take anything away from that, you do provide, but there's others, you know, they label, you know, crazy councilperson does, you know, fight at council meeting, just take a look at some of those things, and yeah, you know, everybody has little rough edges, but you know, it always could be worse. But remember, you don't want to be the worst, you don't want to be anywhere near that, you want to look good, you want to act good, you want to sound good, you want to talk good, all that. Okay, so think about those council dynamics, what you're, when you're in the decision-making process. Okay, meeting rules. First and foremost, gotta have the meeting rules. Oh, before we, before we go to meeting rules, one of the slides I forgot to mention, and since we have Larry Curly sitting in the back row here, sorry, Greg, Mr. Canfield, I have to be respectful, you know, my pipes may leak or something like that, and I may leak this out, but you have, you've worked through committees, you've worked through boards, and you've got to give them due deference, you have to give them respect and civility, you have to, again, build the morale with the E on the end with those people. And remember that you have a couple types of committees. You have the recommendation-only committee, okay? And then you have a decision-making committee. You know, light and power, of course, is big deal decision-making committee, they're the ultimate decision-makers ass too. Planning?
DDA.
DDA, okay, they have certain decision-making authority too, also, and?
Planning, we're just, we just recommend, and the council makes the decision.
Okay. So just as long as you know what your title is, and I would suggest to you folks, free legal advice here, is take a look at your constitutions or your fund, the documents that you're working with, you know, the State Enabling Act that deals with the State Land Use Act that deals with planning, same thing, go back, take a look at what you can do and what you can't do as a DDA member, and you have to look at the charter as to what you can do or not. So I just want to make sure that you know that we're working through our boards and Okay. We are at the rules, let me just give you a couple notes that I have on that, that I took a look at. A5, it's, just make a note of A5, study sessions, you don't have a set of rules with you. It says, upon the call of the mayor or the council, you can call for a study session, or you have to have the whole council call session? No, the other places for a special meeting, you have two members, the mayor or two members of the council can call a special meeting. I would suggest that, take a look at that, is that the way you want it, or do you want to make it something else? Then, if you take a look at B1, the last paragraph, it talks about videotaping and audio recording and so on, and they will be stored electronically forever and ever, hallelujah, amen. I don't think so. So have a, sort of a time, because storage space is going to get to you sooner or later, a year, two years, three years, whatever you want to do for historical purposes, maybe you've got a fantastic, maybe you can talk to the people at the Steelcase Building, see if they will give you a little space on their server so you can store forever, if they can give it to you for free. So have that. And the other thing that I would like to make a reference, I want you to consider, putting in some language that the recordings are not the minutes. The minutes are the documents that are prepared by the clerk. And I think we talked about the minutes, what should be contained in the minutes, action items versus narrative and so on. Does everybody understand minutes? Let me take a moment out to talk about minutes. There are three types of minutes that you can have. Everybody has to keep minutes, okay? And the question is, what type of minutes do you have? Congress, everybody knows Congress, the crazy people on the hill in Washington DC? I'm sorry, I shouldn't do that, I should be more respectful of the democratic process and so on. But they keep verbatim minutes, literally everything that's said at the floor, everything on the floor of Congress, everything that's said in committee is recorded and literally on paper, it's called the congressional record, and it gets to be a foot a day or, nobody possibly can read it except if you're doing some investigation or research or so on. Okay, so that's the verbatim, that's one minute, one set of minutes. Then we go way over to the other side and what I call the action items. And if you take a look at Mr. Roberts, he says, action item minutes, that's what they suggest. And those action items are those items that have been moved, not, we had a discussion about, let's pick on the manager some more, the manager's brown shoes with his black suit or so on, we had that discussion, that isn't, not part of the minutes. If there's a resolution to adopt the budget of the light and power, that's a resolution, right? Now, if it does not have, it got a second, right? So you put that, now becomes part of the minutes, that's an action item. If it does not get a second, by the way, I said second, not a support, if it does not get a second, it doesn't appear, it just isn't there, nobody's interested in it.
Can you define the difference between a second and support?
Yeah, support is something they made up in Alice in Wonderland. Yeah, no, I'm sorry, Alan, but the hour is getting late and I'm getting a little punch drunk here, a little bit, a little goofy. A second implies that you, or better yet, a support implies that you support that goofy motion that he made about the orange police cars. A second only means that you are interested enough in talking about it. The mover must move, must vote for his motion or his ordinance or whatever he moved, but the seconder does not. The seconder, all he or she does is saying, I'm interested enough to talk about it, when the vote calls, have you persuaded me, haven't you persuaded me? And then you vote whatever you want to vote. That's sort of the difference, and to make it very clear, and again, if you want to go to the terminology in Mr. Roberts, it says second, not support. Okay? And that makes it clear to everybody that you're not really necessarily, yeah, you kind of support it, but, and it's very interesting to think on the light and power today, you know, everybody was kind of hesitant to offer, to move that, you were okay on moving it, and then we were hesitant to move or to do a second. Well, a second isn't going to hurt you, all you're going to do is you want to talk about it.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, but Jim helped me through that, I did appreciate that.
Yeah, well, this is good, we have to learn from each other, even from Jim, you know, you can learn from, even from Jim, yeah, no, he's a valuable resource, and even if you don't have him, I, you know, as the announcement I heard on last month's videotape, if you don't have him as mayor, you still have him as a resource person, I don't think he's going to hang up on you if you call him and says, Jim, what do you think about, how should we handle this problem, or, you know, can you give us some insight on that? And that would be a good one to do. Okay, so we've got the verbatim minutes, and then we've got the plain action items. So we move the budget as presented, we have a second, and then we have a vote, okay? I didn't like the roll call vote. Okay, I would have liked to have, I'm sorry, I didn't like the voice vote, I would have liked to have a roll call vote on that, because you knew it was going to be close. Okay? In my notes, I know who voted for it and who didn't vote for it, and maybe the people who didn't want to vote for it may have wanted to be on the record of not voting for it. And maybe the people who voted for it wanted to be on the record for voting for it. So those items where you have kind of a close vote, those things that are of significance for the community, where you kind of want to make a rec, and as a matter of fact, for everything except maybe approval of the minutes or adjourning or, you know, those kind of perfunctory motions, how long is going to take you to roll call vote?
Not long.
25 seconds? 15 seconds? It's not going to extend your meeting that much more. Yeah, she has to write that in for the As and As instead of motion passed or a resolution passed or so on. Makes it a little bit clearer if you want to go back, and it may be of importance, again, like I say, if it's a significant item, those people who can reconsider a particular motion have to be on the prevailing side. Now, we know that the record shows we had a 3-2 hold on the light and power, but who was on the prevailing side? Where is it written? Prove it to me, who was on the prevailing side? Who can reconsider? Okay, just, I'm giving you stuff to think about, I'm not telling you what you should do, you're going to have a high, a heavy-duty meeting coming up where you may want to talk about these, and then, of course, you have the worst of all evils, is kind of the hybrid minute, minutes, where the clerk is burdened in saying, write down the important stuff that was said. Now, with all due respect, smart lady, but what is important for her, certainly, Alan, is not important for you. Or what is important for you may not be important for her. So you're really putting her in a tough place, and then when you go to approve the minutes two weeks later and say, well, I didn't say that that was a red car, it was a blue car that we approved, or, you know, some goofy stuff like that, that really has no significance, but you want to keep the record straight, don't put it in the record. I want you to think seriously about having the action-only minutes, okay? And then, that brings me back to the council, where do we have, yeah, in Section B1, the last paragraph, it talks about the minutes, it should be, I would recommend that it's very clear that the audio tapes or the videotapes are not the minutes, because there's some stuff that, you know, even, even Igor there might have a slip of the digit or the bit or the byte or something like that, you know, he may not carry it, there might be a hiccup in the thing, or something is lost. There is going to be the official minutes, and make it clear there that the audio or videotapes or anything like that will not be the minutes of the meeting. I would suggest you think about that a little bit. The monthly reports, or is that where you now have, is that eight on your agenda item? Is that monthly reports?
And we have that every two meetings, usually the second meeting of the month of the previous meeting, of the previous month.
Yeah, what I heard is that you will, from last week's motion, or last month's motion, is you said that you will have the reports or so on and so forth.
Well, that's of the boards and commissions.
Right.
As opposed to the monthly reports of the operations of our various departments.
So you're going to adjust the boards and commissions on this, if you're going to, if you have a majority of the council that wants to do that, not only, but have something that you, the chair will articulate, or call the boards and commissions like you did today, no report, no report, got a report, got a report, no report, and so on, so that you fill that out a little bit on the rules. All right, on D1, Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, that's fine, but she said the Rules of Parliamentary Procedure is contained in, oh, you do have the most recent, I'm sorry, I misread that, in the latest edition of Roberts. That's in there, that's fine. I was going to tell you, put in the latest edition of Roberts.
Whatever, maybe.
Okay.
Here, can I ask a question on the minutes?
Only if the mayor allows.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Public comments.
Public comments?
Mm-hmm.
The bare minimum I would have is public comments were held, or, you know, three people spoke, nobody spoke. You want to get a little fancy? Do you know the people's names? You can put it in there. Your rules require that the person identifies himself, you say must, I would suggest may, because there might be somebody out there that just doesn't want to give them your name for some reason, I don't know, sex crime victim, for example, or somebody who's being stalked, or, they just don't want to give you your name, whatever, they may have some real good information for you too. Everything else applies, but if you can ident, but you don't say what she talked, you want to say, well, they talked about dogs, or they talked about, it's not necessary, just say, you know, public comment was held, three people participated, or whatever, you're covered, that's all you need to do.
One more question on the minutes.
Remember you challenge, channeled all of your inquiries, ladies and gentlemen, through the presiding, I'm sorry?
We haven't really addressed that.
We'll get to that.
Okay.
May I ask one more question?
Proceed.
In the minutes, listing others present, I would list the council members that are...
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
But others present, such as myself, the city manager, the police chief, is that listed as well too?
That's a local option, it's not required by the Open Meetings Act, it doesn't require it. Typically, you have the members of the board, and here, it might be worth mentioning those people, because the manager is required by charter to attend all the meetings, you're required to attend all the meetings and so on, so you might make a note, present also were. But because Chamber of Commerce, oh, I don't know, Hildebrand or, you know, some sort of politician, don't have to have them, okay? You can if you want to, you know, those politicians, they'd like to see their name in the minutes, you might have under public comment Senator, is it Senator, Senator Hildebrand or so on, you might want to mention that, not necessary.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. Other thing to consider in terms of rules and regulation, I'm taking up a lot of your time, but I think this is a little bit important for you, because that's your basic document. You have right now, and on roll call votes, four, number four, on, what is it, D4? In all roll call votes, any member of council shall be called... In all roll call votes, named member of council shall be called in alphabetical order, with the mayor being last. Okay, so Jeff, you have to vote first all the time.
Yeah, there you go. So, I think we'll change that group, or, or I'm gonna try to.
Okay, so, how are you gonna change it?
Stand. All right, um, I will say, I would like to say the first time I vote first, we do another roll call vote, Jim has to vote first, we do another one.
Jeff. Have it in alphabetical order, but start with you.
Yeah.
And then the next vote is the second person in alphabetical order, and then the rotation continues on, so that you're not always the first, and the mayor may not always be the last. Typically, they have the mayor as the vote breaker, as such. Is that required? Where is it written in the charter that thou shall be last, and that you shall be the vote breaker?
Well, man, those rules and procedures.
Okay, so that's up for you guys to think about, what is the best way of doing that?
And I, my own personal feeling on that, quite briefly, is whomever the mayor would be, I think it's important, should it be a tie, that the mayor be the deciding vote, but that's my opinion.
There, there is some logic to that, and also, the mayor swings a little heft. You know, if the mayor votes at the beginning, the other council members are gonna say, "Ah, I better vote with the mayor." And if you don't know how the mayor is going to vote, you know, then you'll vote your conscience rather than, you know, what the mayor is going to, to be, so, you know, both ways. You know, there's good and bad, and it's up to you guys to, uh, make, uh, questions on the, on, on the rules that are, okay? There are certain provisions of civility that are provided for in your rules, and a couple of things that jump out, and they're later on in the, but the one that I, I wanna mention now is, it says no interruptions. You are only allowed to speak when recognized by the chair. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, gentlemen, if there's one thing that I would be, or I observed today, and in the other tapes, you don't adhere to that very well. You know, if there's, you're, you're at the family dinner table, you know, or at least my family dinner table, where everybody's interrupting each other, and, and so on. Here, you gotta be recognized by the chair, whoever, or the presiding officer, whoever the presiding officer is, when you're recognized, you get a chance to speak. And then, of course, you, until everybody's had an opportunity to speak, you don't have a chance to speak again, until so it goes around. It's a fair way of, that's the rule of law, that's the fair way of doing it, that's the legitimate way, and, and nobody gets, of, because I have a bigger voice, or a louder voice, I don't have a one-up on the person, who's a little bit meek on that. So those are some of the observations that I have for you on your rules. They're, by and large, are very good, you know, these are just some nitpicking type rules. So you've got to read the charter, and you have to be intimately familiar with these rules, and you gotta pop. Oh, one other thing I have to mention about the rules, and that comes from last week's meeting, we waived the rules, or something like that. If I had my brothers and my recommendation to you, you have to do what you do, but mine is, you don't waive, you know, unless it's a, oh, I don't know, if Nelson Mandela came here, I would suspend the rules and allow him to address the, you know, so on. You know, when you have that type of a situation, you waive the rules. But work out the rules, that's not, give, give good thought to the rules, to the way, the way you are going to develop them next meeting, so you don't have to waive them. And again, taking you back to the rules of law, those people out there, they wanna know how you are going to proceed. And somebody says, "Well, I wanna waive the rules, and I wanna do it my way." And all of a sudden, you know, there's, does it require a majority, or two-thirds to waive the rules?
Majority.
Yeah, here it requires, in Mr. Roberts, you have to have two-thirds. So, you know, here, you, to waive the rules is a little bit easier in a level than it is perhaps in some other places. Because pretty soon, the waiver of the rules becomes the rule, 'cause you waived it all the time, all the time, all the time, and then, you know, you've, you've, you didn't do the rules correctly in the first place. Question on the rules. And again, remember, these are superior to Roberts' rules. Roberts only comes in, if this, if this fails, then you have to go to there, and be careful. Mr. Roberts was written for these, like, the Democratic or Republican National Convention. You know, he's got stuff like, "The, the House shall be divided." Huh? That just means, all the delegates in favor of this proposition go on the one side, all the delegates on the other side, so that they can count them, they can't take a roll call vote of these big meetings, where you have thousands of people attending. So you got a lot of that kind of stuff in there, that really is not going to help you a whole lot. Okay, we talked about transparency. There's a new cottage industry called suing on freedom of information, and suing on open meetings. Because the attorneys, if you have any violation at all, are entitled to attorney fees. And they're just, I used to say, the, the big three were land use, personnel issues, and cops were the ones that generated the lawsuits for municipalities. Well, nowadays, it's freedom of, or, you know, transparency lawsuits, land use, personnel issues, and cops. That all of a sudden has got into that. Okay, what is a meeting? And everybody, does everybody have a copy of the Open Meetings Act? You should have a copy of the Open Meetings Act. If you don't have a copy of the Open Meetings Act, you can Google it. I didn't give you a copy of the, I would've, you know, you would've had the stuff. If I gave you everything, you would've had the foot-high stuff. Yeah, anyway, Google, Open Meetings Act is, what did I say, 1976 Public Act 267, or Michigan MCL 15.261. Yes, sir?
It's in the council handbook.
It isn't, okay, and takes care of that. Thank you very much. Um, we have council handbook?
We do.
Oh, okay. All right, a couple of things about Open Meetings Act. What's a meeting? A meeting is when we have quorum present, or gathered in some fashion, deliberating towards a decision. Quorum, deliberating towards a decision.
Doesn't mean you made a decision, means you're deliberating.
Can't get a decision without deliberating.
Really?
Yeah. Well, what a deliberating or decision. Now, I gotta, have to do a little exception here. I said all meetings gotta be posted, gotta be open to the public, and we gotta keep minutes, those are sort of the essential items of posted, open, and we gotta have minutes. And then I say deliberation of, and decisions in public. We can't do round robbins. What happens is, oh, what would be a good example? Okay, the budget, let's go back to the budget.
The, the light and power?
Hypothetically, I'm not saying this is true, I'm just saying hypothetically, what would be is Alan calls Mike, "Mike, you know, I don't like the budget, what do you think about the budget? I'm gonna vote against it, and what are you gonna vote against it?" And Mike says, "Okay, I, I don't like the budget either, I'm gonna vote." Okay, so then Alan calls Jeff, and he tells Jeff number two, right, Jeff one, Jeff two, okay, Jeff number two, and says, "Hey, I just talked to Mike, Mike's gonna vote against it, I'm gonna vote against it, what do you think about that?" What are we doing? Round robin deliberating towards a decision. Okay? We have found the, the case, even though it doesn't specifically say round robin, the Michigan Supreme Court has defined those round robins as being a meeting, illegal, pay money. Rescind the action that you took. That's one of the things, you rescind the action, pay money to the attorney for doing that. So avoid that. One of the things where we get into the round robin business, and at least it's been my experience in, in the cities that I have worked with or dealt with, especially when you're making appointments to boards and committees. Do you like Greg? Eh, I don't know, he's been there too long, you know, he's, he didn't, he didn't commit, what is it, donate to my fundraiser, you know, I don't know, you know, and then you go around and you kinda get a consensus, okay? Let me be quite candid with you, I don't wanna totally freak you out, there are some exceptions for, to this round robin voting, okay? Kind of exceptions, not really exceptions. St. Avon versus, or no, yeah, St. Avon versus Ishpeming is the case, where they were talking about a, firing an employee. And the mayor called each one of the council members and said, "I wanna put termination of employee X on the agenda." In the, in Ishpeming, the different form of government, they could do that. Okay, so, so what, what do you think? And he says, "Yeah, I'll, I'll, that's fine, I'll put, I'll vote for that." Councilman B, vote for that, Councilman C, vote for that, so that nose counting, as such, it's, they said that that was okay. I hesitate to mention that, because everybody I mention to it starts abusing it. All right? So round robin and nose counting is different. Will they ever find out that you did the round robbing? Of course, you come to the city council table and say, "Okay, I wanna appoint Greg to the, uh, to the committee," or so on, it's fixed, done. Everybody votes, all, you know, boom, 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 it's five-zero, zip. Guy from the newspaper said, "Hmm, boy, last week there was a lot of controversy about Greg, you know, he got that hotel going, he got his plumbing business going, parks those antique cars illegally." You know, I don't know, but, but all of a sudden, then we get over here, and it's five-zip, no discussion, he's appointed. You know, somebody can smell a rant in the, in the deal. Greg, I'm sorry to pick on you, but you're the...
I'm a rattler.
No. But, do you know what I'm saying? Just be careful about the round robin. All right, closed session, there are some specifics that we complained from people, but they, and, and so on. And then, of course, once you make the decision, Freedom of Information Act gets all the public records. And let me just shorten this up a little bit by saying that anything that contains meaningful information, including councils' emails, text messages, that's where they got Kwame on his text messages, are part of the Freedom of Information, they're meaningful documents. If you're sending a message to the mayor, if you're sending a message to the other council people, they, they may subpoena that, or may be subject to the Freedom of Information Act. The other thing I wanna mention is that, if you get any federal money, do we get any federal money? Mike? We do get federal money? Take a look at those contracts, they may say that you are subject to the Federal Freedom of Information Act also. And that's a little bit different than the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, so you have to be alert to that. So, know that. All right, we're halfway through our presentation. That's serious, says half. All right, what I want to do is give you a couple, just highlights, and I'm gonna try and get you out maybe five minutes after ten.
Or ten minutes after.
Ten, and so on. Take a look, I'm on page five at the top, specific roles, and that Michigan Municipal Review Magazine that I make reference to, that's the one that I gave you, that's the three-page handout that you have there. Again, I said the roles for the city council members in terms of morale building, do I have an E on that, on that place?
No.
No? Okay, at least I'm consistent.
Yeah.
Morale building, and follow the chain of command. You know, there's nothing that's gonna destroy the integrity and the, what can I say, the authority of the city manager, or your administrator, if you don't follow the chain of command. So, you wanna encourage your office, your employees, but don't violate the chain of command. Rule of the majority of vote, everybody knows, I've mentioned already what's the matter, can't you count to three? And as such, you are acting as gatekeepers to make sure that everybody else is complying with the laws, and acts ethically, and so on. And then I repeat myself, and I say, you act as a body, you do not act individually. Your authority as an individual council member, Jeff, is zip, zilch, nothing. I'm sorry to be that, what, candid with you, but does impotent mean anything to you? No, 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 not that, come on, get your mind out of the gutter.
It's late, it's bedtime.
Get your mind out of the gutter, I said that already. But what I'm saying is you have no power as an individual, you have to work with a majority, you have to work with three people. All right, can't decide without attending the meetings? For sure, so you have an obligation, it's not gonna be easy work that you've signed up for. At least you have to show up, and showing up is about half of the work, if that, you know, if that's not. Okay, absences, there's certain provisions in your charter that deals with absences. Debate, remember what I said about educating? When you debate a resolution, and you did a good job on that today, I, I thought, Alan, on your, your information that you brought to the table, and your information that you gave to the public. By the way, there's a legal issue, too, about the commitments that prior councils have made, that bind successive councils, especially if work has been done on that, you know, if, that, so you, maybe you didn't know it, but, you know, you were following the law in projecting that.
I just thought it was the honorable thing.
Well, it is honorable, and it is the legal thing to do, also. You know, think about, guys pouring, you know, you hired a guy to pour concrete in the main street, and all of a sudden, the second council says, "No, we don't wanna pay, you know, the main street, you gotta have the concrete poured, no." You know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to pay for that, you're gonna eat that bill somehow or another. But test of, okay, act only through resolutions, or does part of, part of parliamentary procedure we talked about? And I, boy, I wish I had a little bit more time to talk about civility, decorum, and those kind of things that we have to have at the council level, okay? And if you, if you got a problem with somebody at the break time, or, you know what? You know, you, when you talk to, who would you, if you got a problem with Jim, okay? And you talk to him about your problem, are you deliberating towards a decision? Are you in violation of the Open Meetings Act? First of all, you don't have quorum.
Right.
And he's not gonna go anywhere, he's not gonna talk to Jeff one, or Jeff two about that, or some, that's not a violation of the Act. Probably something that they handle much better in privacy. And by the way, if you chastise and embarrass somebody here out on the council table, you think they're ever gonna vote for you on one of the motions or propositions that you had? Very hesitantly. Remember my good friend Benjamin Franklin? Poor Richard Tomlin.
Yes.
Honey draws more flies than vinegar. Honey draws, be nice, gets you a heck of a lot more than being nasty. Ask your wife. Okay, a couple other things, at slide twenty... Slide 25, okay. You guys, Greg, you're supposed to keep track of this, make sure that I'm following this, hear my guilty conscience, please. All right, read, gotta do lots of reading. You know, we said, somebody talked about, well, there's lots of resources in the audience, and so on, so on. The audience is like the internet. They only give you what they want to, you know, to, to see, and, and we're, you know, ninety, I don't know, ninety percent, a lot of the stuff on the internet is bogus.
Really, oh.
Okay, and, well, you, you cannot believe, you know, I, I mentioned, I taught... And, well, you, you cannot believe, you know, I, I mentioned I taught university, and people cite the internet as an authority on papers that they would send in on a master's program. And I would, you know, challenge them and so and so forth, I said, "Okay, not only I feel insulted that you would use the internet as your research tool when we have to cite class library, but let's take a look at the thing that you have cited." Now verify that, tell me, is it true, is it false, is it, you know, whatever else it is. Okay. Read, study, consult, inquire what others are doing, and I heard Mark say something, Essexville's a good community up by Bay City, it's sort of a heads-up community that I've, or at least I know their lawyer up there, and he's a pretty heads-up guy, might be a good resource or so on. Slide twenty-six, I have maintaining the image of the city. You know, you are the ambassador of the city, not only here at the council table, but when you are out at, out in public. My second wife was a, my second ex-wife was a elected county official up in Emmett County, and it took her an hour to get ready. Every time we went grocery shopping, every time we, because she said, "I'm elected, I don't want people to see me in hair curvers, or in pajamas, or in my robe, or whatever else women wear nowadays, you know, in public that's convenient." We didn't have kids to drive to school, but I'm sure if we had kids to drive to school, she'd, you know, do her makeup before she drove the kids to school and that. That's a physical thing. More important than the physical thing is how you act out there, who you associate with, how you speak, how you, how you carry yourself as a member of the city. This, you know, the kids look at you, the uninformed people, people that don't know you, see you, oh, I don't know, what, what could I say, at the bar getting soused, you know, yelling and dancing and all of that other stuff, that's my city council member? Maybe not here, but the way it does happen in, in other communities, I can tell you about driving council people home, but never mind. And don't look at my list of places for employment where I previously employed because we might embarrass somebody there. All right, decisions made on, I'm on slide twenty-seven. Decisions that are made, again, take a look at a more holistic approach rather than a damage control approach. Most city councils work on a damage control type of thing, what do we gotta do so that the sky doesn't fall in? That's why I asked you the first question, what is your goal for 25 years from now? And work for, towards that goal, you know, what's your 10-year goal, what's your five-year goal, and so on. And you guys, you know, this magnificent fight, need to be singing out of the same hymnal when we talk about goals for the city, so that your thinking, your votes, your actions, all are consistent towards, towards that goal. And then, of course, what happens if your, your goal setting conflicts with the rest of the council? What's the matter, can't you count to three? Because it's the majority that will set the goals for the council, for you. Okay, a couple other things, and this is, this is a tough one to do because this is constituent services on twenty-eight. You can't say yes to everybody, you can't believe the people came to my office at the city of Troy and said, "Well, can you help me with my income tax?" I'm a city attorney, I don't do your income tax, you know, that type of thing, but, so I have to say no. But I can tell them, the IRS is down on, you know, First Boulevard by the bridge over there, and you can go over there, or they, you know, take a look, are they health services or so, we have a little telephone list by the front door for the most frequently asked questions and so on. And again, be straightforward with your appointees also, and there's a real three-hour session that I can talk about dealing with the appointees and the selection, taking up complaints about the employees, evaluating the employees, and then what do you have to do in case you have to remove one of those employees. The other thing, of course, is that you have to do on slide twenty-nine is judge, judge the fitness of your council members. I talked about ice cream, I talked about A and B, non-attendance, not following the law. What do you do when a council member doesn't follow the law? They're censured, as they did with Todd and Cindy, they removed them. Can you remove a council person here at the city of low?
For cause.
For cause, and you know you're gonna have a lawsuit afterwards, and so if, if it is, it's gonna be a severe one, and you better get your ducks in a row and work with your attorney really so that it's bulletproof and it doesn't come back and get you for some unjust something or other, or improper termination or so on. Rid of mandamus, I just threw that in there, that is a writ to make a public official do his clear legal duty.
There's your E.
I'm sorry?
There's your E.
Yeah, there's your E.
At form.
Yep. The, the E that was missing from morale was, got stuck under the red.
The right of mandamus, okay, is that like last right? Never mind. Techniques for better decision-making, take a quick look at that, interruptions while others have the floor, recognize before you're speaking, discussion, there's something, here you guys discuss a thing, then you make a motion, and then you get a second, and then you discuss it more. What happens if you discuss the thing, somebody makes a motion, and there's no second? You've just been flapping your jaw for fifteen minutes and you can't even get a second? Nobody's interested in the particular item? So think about that, should we have discussion before a motion is made, or should you only have discussion after a motion is made? Little note for the rules of procedure. It's, it's, it's up to you however you wanna attack that, start attacking personalities rather than topics. Straightforward, right? You don't do that. Repetition, saying over and over and over again, same thing, "Sit down, Alan, we've heard it already, okay, enough is enough." I'm sorry, Alan, I'm picking, I hope you don't mind. And then, of course, bullying and threats, I've seen at so many council tables where somebody's trying to intimidate, "I'm never gonna vote for you, and I'm not gonna support you next time around for election," or whatever it is, "And I'm not gonna shop at your stupid plumbing store ever again," you know. What have I got? Use facts, not opinions, I dislike that. You saw this joke somewhere on the, can you count the, count the logs?
That one, that's good.
Yeah, remember facts, what are the facts? Facts are things like dollars and cents, time, dimensions, those are facts. Okay? Opinions. Reality, take a look, look at those bottles of liquor, and then you focus in on what it really is, was they came in for the close shot, and that's not reality. So think about that, I want you to, you know, you guys are gonna make some big decisions here. Okay? And I want you to, to make them good. Persuading others, gotta persuade at least two more, right? And before you start down the road of persuasion, think about it, are you really correct in your opinion? Double-check your opinion. Or at least be open to changing your opinion if you can't persuade somebody else. What are the political ramifications, not a small letter, not big letter P, small letter P or so and so forth? For example, I was up in Empire, Empire hates the park services, they don't deal with the park services. Empire is a recreational community, who do they need the most help from? The park service, US Park Service, they better get, figure out what the politics are there. Face-saving things, you wanna give everybody an opportunity to save face at the table? When you're wrong, don't rub it in their face, you know, and don't rub it in the staff's face either, you don't wanna embarrass your staff. You've got a problem with the staff, take the manager, talk to the manager, saying, "Hey, your guy from fire department there, or police department," you know, talk to him a little bit about whatever it is, talk to the manager, he's the conduit, remember the chain of command that I talked about. Pride, emotional, and don't gloat. When you win, be a humble winner, and you, you will, you know, you'll win more than you lose, I'll guarantee you that. Listen to what others are saying, and that's, you know, we're so often disreliant to listening, we're so ready to figure out what are we gonna say, we don't listen to what the other person is going to say. I like this, this is another little thing to take a look at, when you judge someone without knowing them, you do not define them, you define yourself. That sounds pretty good. Okay, some other techniques, objective decisions, locate all the information and so on, keep your supporters, educate the public, maintain some checklist to do on, on that. And this is especially where, I heard Twitter, I heard Facebook today at the meeting, I heard, what else did I hear, social media, and so on. Think before you act, think twice before you speak, and think three times before you post stuff on social media. Social media never goes away, it will be there forever, like the pyramids. All right, I am out of, oh, I like this one here too. Wait, wait, you, me, take, me, don't look at the picture up there. A cup of coffee, this is a cup of coffee, one-to-one, mono, mono, whatever else it is, get a lot of things done that way. Okay? You know, you're not doing it in a public record, you're not doing a quorum, you're not deliberating towards a decision. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I've suggested, we have, I have the city council on the other side of the state that I'm working with, and they can't get along with each other. So I'm, I have a benefactor who's going to buy lunch or dinner for the council members and their wives, so that they can just socialize and find out about each other and, you know, see what, what hot buttons they have. And if you know the person, then you can't get mad at them, or you understand where they're coming from, or so on, and that's what this, this is all about, is if you just kind of get to know the other people that you're dealing with. Ethical standards, here I've got a couple items that I have for you, you can read those things, they're from Josephson Institute, if you wanna do some research on government ethics, Google Josephson, he's out in California, St. Louis, Obispo, something or other, high-class rodeo drive, or, or someplace like that, that I can't afford to drive that to. And then, one of the things, before I leave you, I want you to think about the consequence of your actions. There are positive consequences and there are negative consequences of what you do. And I started with the positive, you'll achieve your goals, you know, you're working towards your goals, that's, that's, that's what you wanna do. You will have happy citizens, or maybe not happy, but you will have content, or maybe you won't have content, you could be satisfied with not having unhappy citizens, you know, maybe that's the goal. And then the employees, you know, I've mentioned that three or four times, they're the guys that are gonna make the success of the city or not. You know, you've got some disgruntled, some bad-mouthing out there, they, they can torpedo the city, but good. Negative thing, stagnation, you're not gonna get anywhere, you're not gonna get to your goals, dissatisfaction in the city, and then civil lawsuits and prosecution. I had, at Troy, I had one lawsuit that was nine million eight hundred and seventy, some hundred thousand dollars, a police case. Three thousand dollars in interest every day, you know, you wanna talk about, you know, that type of thing, so there's some big thing. The city of, I think Wixom, Novi, somewhere down there, gave away hundreds of, maybe not hundreds, but acres of city property to satisfy a lawsuit because they didn't have enough money in the till or insurance to pay for the lawsuit, that, that's, there's some pretty severe stuff. East St. Louis, in, where is that, Missouri, Kansas, somewhere, wherever, East St. Louis is.
Illinois.
Pardon?
Illinois.
Could be. East St., across the street from St. Louis, they sold City Hall, they sold parks, they sold, you know, all sorts of assets, just, not to balance the budget, just to say, and if you don't balance, if you don't pay the lawsuit, and you don't have enough insurance coverage, you know what happens? It's called a judgment levying. So where the court will literally impose a judgment on the tax rolls of the city, and then somebody yells, "Headley!" Now, they've litigated that, and it goes overheadly. Talk to the city of Hamtramck, they really got zapped on an EPA type of a thing where city taxes went up, you know, fifty percent for the next ten years or, or whatever. So you don't wanna have that. Criminal prosecution, talk to my friend Kwame, and you can see how you can get into a situation. What more do you wanna know? Think about this a little bit, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, get back to Mark, if there are other things that you want to know that may help you how to get things done better in the city. And you know, we just skimmed over the top of all of that, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Couple resources that I want you to, to be aware of, Michigan Municipal League, you can always call them, they have, if you get on their website, take a look, and lots of information on their website, and they have a research reference, something or other, Kim Zikola, I think runs that bureau, and if you have a question on a particular topic, she's not gonna give you advice, but you can say, "Well, I have this article on Essexville did that," or somebody, you know, so she can give you some resource information on that. Michigan Research Council, be familiar with those people, they do sort of intellectual reports on what happens with property tax, what happens with personal property tax, what's happening with the roads, and very interesting, and the future of small government, or of governments, or local governments. And then, don't overlook the universities, those are resources that you can call upon to, to help you out. And then, finally, the last slide that I have for you this evening. If better government doesn't begin with me, with whom will it begin? And if better government in this city doesn't begin tonight, when will it begin? And with that, ladies and gentlemen and gentlemen, thank you very much, and audience, thanks for sticking it out with me, thank you, good night. Thank you.